Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving and welcome to the November 8th, 2021 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If all would stand please, Commissioner Marvin Whitworth will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Marvin?
Let us pray. Our Holy Father, we are indeed grateful for the opportunity to come tonight and discuss matters of business pertaining to our county. We pray that your blessings be upon us as we conduct this meeting and may our decisions be those that will positively affect the community and our residents of our community. Father, we pray that you be with us in all that we do. Father, we pray for those that are hurting tonight, those that are sick. Be with those and their families that they may once again be given the health that they need, that they can continue on. Father, we pray that you be with us in all that we do. Bless our country, bless our first responders and those men and women that protect us. Father, be with us and keep us in Christ's name. Amen. I stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Aberwater, Lee Bogle, Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you, Gail. At this time, we need to approve the minutes for our September 13th meeting. I'll call on our Vice Chair Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a copy of those minutes with me. I have gone over those minutes and I find nothing improper. I make a motion, they be approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve our September 13th, 2021 meeting minutes. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. The motion carries. Thank you. We have no items that have been withdrawn or deferred for tonight. We'll get right to our business. Item 6A, we have one item submitted for preliminary plan approval. 6AA, item number 21-1014 Brewer Point, 165 lots on 92.63 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Stewart Creek Road. Brewer Point is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you and good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. This property looks, I'm sure it looks familiar to everybody. This came before the Plan Commission and the Board of Commissioners earlier this year. It was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in August. The development, as you recall, will consist of two single-family products, 15,000 square foot lots and also 10,500 square foot lots. This preliminary plan does appear to conform to the approved pattern book. The applicant is proposing to make several improvements to Stewart Creek Road. As you recall, they're going to be making turn lane improvements into the subdivision. They're going to soften the curve in Stewart Creek Road that Mike is highlighting in that area. And they're also proposing to make a three-way stop at the western, excuse, that should be the easternmost, not the westernmost intersection there that Mike is circling on the plan. Those improvements have been noted on the plan. As far as the preliminary plan itself is concerned, this is more of a, this isn't the detailed document that goes into the construction drawings. This plan and our comments for this have pretty much been addressed. It's in pretty good shape. There are several things that they are going to have to provide more detail on, obviously, for the construction drawings, but that's more of a staff level. But from a preliminary plan standpoint, this plan's in good order. We'd recommend approval.
Thank you.
If there's no questions, I make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve. Item 21-1014 Brewer Point Preliminary Plan. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B, we have two items submitted for final plan approval. 6BA, item number 21-2087 Rooker Landing, Section 4, Phase 1, resubdivision of Lot 8, five lots on 1.2 acres, Zoned PUD, located along Jack Falk Street. M.H. Way is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property is located off of Rooker Road, off of Shelbyville Pike. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in February of 2020. Again, this final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary plan approval and also the approved construction drawings. They did have to move the front setback slightly further back than some of the other lots, which in and of itself wasn't a really big issue. The reason they had to do that was some of the lot widths that they had dictated in the pattern book were just a little bit short, so they scooted the front setback toward the rear of the property just a little bit to be able to meet the minimum width that they needed for that. That is where we measure lot width. We don't measure, there's lot frontage, of course, but then there's lot width. Lot width is measured at the front setback line, so they scooted that back just a little bit. Our issues have been resolved. Actually, when we sent our original set of comments out, they addressed everything. I didn't have a need to send additional comments out, so this plat's in good order. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion to approve with staff comments, Jim? We have a motion to approve.
I think Charlotte seconded it.
I'm sorry?
I think Charlotte seconded it. I thought I heard.
Did you make second?
Yes.
I missed that. I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for item number 21-2088 Thomas Property Four-Lot Revision.
This is the Rooker Landing.
I'm sorry. Rooker Landing. I got ahead of myself. Let me back up here, you guys. We have a motion and a second to approve 21-82087 Rooker Landing, Section 4, Phase 1. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion to approve carries. Thank you. Now let me get back on track. Item 6B, we have a final plat for item 21-2088 Thomas Property Four-Lot Revision. Four lots on 9.79 acres, Zoned RL, located along Allison Road, State Route 269. Scott Walters is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This final plat was approved by the Planning Commission back in August of last year and recorded back in December of last year. The applicant is asking to move some lot lines to shift them around a little bit between lots 1, 2, and 4, and also making some changes to the sole site on Lot 3. Lots 5 and 6, which are further in the back, are not part of this particular development, which is why on that plat that Mike has on the screen, you can see they're kind of, they don't have the amount of detail on them as the other ones do because they're not being affected by this. This change involved, obviously, more than two lots, so we couldn't approve it administratively. But our comments have been addressed. There's one outstanding comment. They needed to add a bearing and distance call along the Lot 1 eastern property line. But other than that, everything is in order with this. Besides that, that's something we'll make sure of before the plat's recorded. We can handle that in-house. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug.
I'm assuming they want to build lots on these. Tell me how driveways are going to work with these lots.
They're doing a shared access easement through there. Mike's kind of highlighting it.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah. I'll zoom in and show you a little bit. There's an existing driveway that a few of the lots are going to share. I think Lot 1 will have a driveway in itself and, let me go back to, so these lots here will, 1, 2, and 3, no, sorry, 2, 3, and 4 will share this driveway. Lot 1 will have a driveway.
And 5, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's going all the way to the back.
Right.
And 6, I think, eventually.
We will have to go back and look at the original plat.
I believe that if I remember right, the original plat had the access easement going back to Lot 6.
Yeah, all the way. And Stewart says private drive. The easement goes all the way into the back.
Again, that's not shown on this plat just because 5 and 6 weren't part of it, but that's.
But I'll pull up the current plat.
Yeah.
The easement extended all the way back through 5 to Lot 6.
I see on here a creek buffer. Is any of this in a floodplain?
It is not. It's just our normal stream buffer requirement through here.
Who maintains the drive? I missed that.
It would be the property owners themselves, not the county.
They probably have some sort of an agreement that shares the maintenance amongst themselves.
Distance or just what's in front of your property or?
I don't know what the actual agreement looks like, but I'm sure there's some sort of shared agreement that they've got. I mean, we don't get involved in that, on that end. That's really up to them since it's a private drive.
I know, we don't want to get involved in that, that's for sure. But we're okay with that.
Right. Well, I mean, the original plat was approved last year, so I mean, as far as anything else goes with this, I mean, this is just shifting some of the lot lines around. The easement's not changing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2088 Thomas Property Four-Lot Revision. Any other questions or comments? It should be. Is that okay? Okay. Add that, Gail. Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6C, we have three items submitted for site plan approval. 6CA, item number 21-3001 Advanced Lawn Solutions Revisions. Construction of 7,500 square feet of sales and office building area upon .8 acres, Zoned CS, located along Forest Lane. Sweet Family Revocable Trust is the applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This site plan was approved by the Planning Commission earlier this year, back in January. The building size approved by the Planning Commission at that time was a little bit under 6,900 square feet, 6,875. When the site plan was submitted for building permits just a few weeks back, the building size had increased to 7,500 square feet, which was actually the original proposed size of the building, which had actually shrunk down a little bit from our original submittal to the subsequent resummittals that we received and the one that went to the Planning Commission. After looking at the plan, it doesn't look like anything else has really changed beyond the building getting a little larger, but we can only approve building enlargements of up to 5% administratively. That's in our zoning ordinance. Anything more than that has to come back before you for approval. Don't really have any major issues with it, just not really sure when it changed, and I don't think the applicant was quite sure why it went smaller to begin with. But other than that, there was a little bit of confusion as to how that happened, but they're asking for the increase. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
So still adequate parking and all the?
Yes, everything's, everything else is fine.
Everything meets. All right. So I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve site plan for 21-3001 Advanced Lawn Solutions Revisions. Other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6CB, a site plan, item number 21-3018 Rutherford County Convenience Center, Rockvale. Construction of approximately 700 square feet of essential services space, including trash receptacles, compactors, associated parking areas on 3.68 acres, Zoned CN and IN, located along Rockvale Road, Rutherford County is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The county plans to redesign this particular site and also the next one on the agenda in Leanna, but we'll start here with the one in Rockvale. On this particular site, the county actually owns property directly across the street from each other. So as of right now, the entire facility is on, I guess that'd be the eastern, southern, southeastern, whatever you want to call it, side of the road. But what will happen with this kind of redesign of this particular facility, you'll have recycling located on the side of the street where the convenience center currently is located, and then the trash and everything else will be on the other side of the road on some other property that the county owns over there. There are some plans to make improvements to the intersection of Rockvale Road and Versailles Road, which will need to be coordinated with our county highway department. The plans themselves appear to be in pretty good order. There may be a couple tweaks here and there that we have to make them or have them make. One of them that I did see after looking at this was just updating some of the landscape calculations in regard to the parking. They've shown the calculations for the buffering that's required, but just need to highlight what the requirement was for the parking areas themselves. But beyond that, these plans are in good order, so we'd be happy to answer any questions. We do recommend approval.
Thank you, Doug. Questions? Does this count before Public Works? Does Public Works discuss this?
Yeah. At most, the last 18 months. So.
So Mr. Chairman and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-3018 Rutherford County Convenience Center in Rockvale. Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6CC, site plan, item number 21-3019 Rutherford County Convenience Center in Leanna. Construction of approximately 1,950 square feet of essential services spaces, including trash receptacles, compactors, and associated parking areas on 3.8 acres, Zoned IN, located along Leanna Road, Rutherford County is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Similar to the last one we just looked at, this is the convenience center in Leanna. The county, again, plans to redesign this particular convenience and recycling center. This will all be on one property, which is different than the one we just looked at. This site has been reworked and probably the biggest change that we were able to coordinate here is the fact that you're going to have a whole lot more stacking space to get cars off of Sulfur Springs Road and onto the property before cars start spilling out onto Sulfur Springs Road. That's one of the major issues with this one and even the Rockvale one as well. There were some improvements made to that one as well. But this is one of the main improvements here, but you can see the layout of the particular property. Again, a few tweaks here and there that need to be made to the plans. The plans themselves are in very good order and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a suggestion to approve this with staff comments. I've been working with this one for a long time on every weekend myself, so this would be a great improvement for Rutherford County and Leanna community. I make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Thank you, David. We have a motion and a second to approve a site plan for item 21-3019 Rutherford County Convenience Center in Leanna. Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6D, we have one rezoning request that's scheduled for a public hearing. 6DA, item REZ21-013 Huddleston Steel Engineering Incorporated by Randy Frightsum. Location is corner of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road. Commission district is 14. County Commissioner is Virgil Gammon. Size of the site is approximately 37 acres. Tax map is 47. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD for planned unit development. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This particular property is located at the intersection of Central Valley Road and Lebanon Pike. I'll just go over a brief introduction here to the actual development. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here with Huddleston Steel. He's got a more in-depth presentation that he'll go into. But the applicant is proposing to construct a mixed-use development on this property. You'll see on the chart on your staff report, page 3 of 5, I've kind of laid it out there, the three different types of product, two-bedroom townhomes, three-bedroom townhomes, and also detached single-family units. Total units are 126, which gives you a gross density of 3.4 units per acre. All units will have driveways adequate for parking for cars. Three-bedroom townhome units and single-family detached units would also have two-car garages. All homes would be a minimum of 75% masonry product, and this will be serviced with a step system for sanitary sewage, and there are also amenity areas throughout the property. They are proposing also a, list a little less, about 1 and 3/4 acre commercial area at the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road. Their plan is for a gas station and convenience market, but their pattern book does state that use is allowed within the commercial services zone. Could also be located on the property with some exceptions. They go over those in the pattern book. Building materials will be masonry with a combination of brick and stone with metal accents, and the property would have access both to Central Valley Road and a right-in, right-out onto Lebanon Pike, as well as internal access to the development. Again, I'll point you to the pattern book for additional information, and Mr. Roundtree will have a presentation here in a moment. Probably the, one of the primary issues we had with this particular application dealt with the traffic and circulation access to the particular project. They are showing two primary access points to the property, one access along Central Valley Road and the second along Lebanon Pike. The primary east-west and north-south roads would be public, but the roads within the townhome development closest to Central Valley Road would be private. There is a stub street to the south that will align with the urban property, which was recently rezoned for a single-family development, and there's also a stub street to the west that will access potential future development. Of course, any approval, they'd have to submit plats and everything for this. The engineered site plan would be required also for the commercial area, should that be approved, and the site plan would have to demonstrate compliance with our county standards. Traffic study was performed as part of this request. They looked at not just this property, but they looked at the property immediately to the south where the urban property is, and also the property immediately to the west because we have had some conversations with potential developers on that particular property, although nothing has been submitted or even neighborhood meetings scheduled at this point. There are several recommendations that we did include in your pattern, I'm sorry, in the application materials that are on your iPads, namely improvements to the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road, signalization of that intersection. However, there was not a recommendation for a left turn lane into the development for westbound traffic along Central Valley Road turning south into the property. Staff does believe that when this intersection is signalized, eastbound traffic along Central Valley Road will increase. A lot of the people from the west, especially in the Liberty Station, Liberty Valley development, they will head south down through those developments, down to Cherry Lane and then out Cherry Lane, which is a signalized intersection, just because Central Valley Road can back up, especially during peak hour times. With a signalized intersection, that's going to make that more attractive for those folks that live over there. Rather than going south and down, they may just come out and Central Valley Road and then go either south or even north on Lebanon Pike. So that's something we felt did need a little more discussion at the Planning Commission. Landscaping and buffering, again, this is a not, we don't typically see buffering between single-family developments, but they are proposing a type 1 buffer along the perimeter of the property, except for the rights-of-way off Central Valley Road and a portion of Lebanon Pike. They are proposing an evergreen buffer between the commercial area and the townhome, townhome units, excuse me, along Central Valley Road, but not a buffer between the soils area and the adjacent residential units, but they do, the step area will be fenced. Residential PUDs, of course, are required to set aside 10% open space with half of that being usable, which this particular development does meet, not by much, but it does meet it. And of course, again, any development of the commercial area for any buffering and lighting and ever dealing with the performance standards would have to be submitted through our office. With that, we have expected development of this tract for some time. Densities proposed in residential areas are consistent with the recommendations of our comprehensive plan. Commercial area is fairly small, less than two acres in size, and the uses are limited to what you would see in the CS zone with some exceptions. Again, the biggest issue we had really with this was the traffic in and out of this development. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and if Mike had anything further to add beyond what I've already said.
You've covered it pretty well, Douglas. But essentially, that's, that's one of the big kicker items was this traffic would queue up on Central Valley because there's not a dedicated right or left turn lane. You get one person that wants to go left and go north on Lebanon Pike would have a hard time turning left, so traffic would back up extremely long through here. And the traffic study indicated that before any improvements, the, it would take one vehicle almost nine minutes to turn left in the PM hours and six minutes to turn left in the morning time. So it takes an extremely long time for somebody trying to go north out of here. So, but they're, they are going to put in a traffic signal, dedicated right and left turn lanes. There's already a three-lane section coming north on Lebanon Pike and then also a southbound right decel lane coming in. So these improvements are already in place. The entrance on Lebanon Pike coming in will need a decel right turn lane coming in. And as Doug mentioned, even though it wasn't mentioned in the report, we felt with this traffic signal coming online and being really attractive to the traffic patterns out here, we feel a lot of these people in the Liberty Station, Liberty Valley, and surrounding areas will use this new traffic signal to get in and out easily. Other than that, like Doug said, we're, we're good with what they're proposing.
Staff have a recommendation?
We did have a recommendation for approval on this. We just felt that additional discussion needed to be had on that left turn lane accessing the development from Central Valley Road.
Are they showing that left-hand?
No.
It wasn't in the traffic report. That's what we're saying. Once this traffic signal gets installed with the turn lanes, you're going to see a lot of these rooftops here in the Liberty Valley, Liberty Station use that to come out because right now it queues up and it takes eight or nine minutes for one car just to get out of there.
So the only question is, is the turn lane?
Yes.
Into the property itself? Okay. Questions for staff at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. I'm a little confused. The six-to-nine minute stack-up is for a traffic study in its current?
In its current configuration. It takes 539 seconds for one vehicle to turn left out of here.
Okay. But you stated that there are already plans to put a traffic signal at that intersection.
No, this plan would do that.
This plan would, would pay for a traffic signal?
Yes.
But it does not have in that report a left turn lane?
A westbound left turn lane into the development on Central Valley. So they're, they're proposing an access point right here, somewhere up here. So we're thinking that they need a, with all the traffic going eastbound now, they're going to need a westbound left turn coming into the development.
Okay. All right.
That wasn't included, and that's where we're thinking it's going to be needed along with this.
Okay. All right. And again, I guess part of my confusion is, wouldn't that be discussed when we, when they bring a site plan to us? Because this is just a zoning request, right?
Well, this is, it's a, to answer your question, under a situation where if it wasn't a planned development, we'd still get a bite at the apple, yes. But we just feel that this is something, if the Planning Commission feels that this is something that should be included in this, it'd be a good time to do it now in the pattern book because then it becomes a part of the zoning approval at that point. Even if you didn't, when it comes back for site plan or plat approval or whatever, I mean, like I said, we'd get another bite at the apple at that point. But with this being a planned development, it can be included in the pattern book now.
So there's a couple other facets to consider on this. You've got the Irwin property that's previously approved to the south that will connect to this, and then also, was it the Vincent property or something like that? Another big development happening right next to it that's going to be intermingled and tied with this one as well. So we asked them to do, look at all of these three developments together and the impacts on the surrounding area. So we asked them to look at the traffic signal down at Cherry Lane and Lebanon, Jefferson Pike and Lebanon, let's see, all the way over here at Central Valley and Swamp Leanna. Pike and Lebanon, let's see, all the way over here at the Central Valley and Swamp Leanna, when it turns, Central Valley turns off Swamp Leanna. So we're, we asked them to look at all these contributing aspects of this. So Irwin properties came online before these two had developed, but we really think that this Vincent property, the property directly to the west of it, needs to contribute to the improvements at this intersection, because they will benefit from it as well. And we, I just wanted to bring that up, that when we see that one, I want y'all to include them with this improvement.
If this is approved, what, what's timeframe on a signal?
They're, they're close behind. I don't know, we haven't seen an official submittal.
Now, we've, we've met with the, their potential design engineer on a project and looked at some concept plans at this point. They're also looking to do a, a planned development, probably something similar to what we're seeing tonight, kind of a mixture of different land uses. But as of right now, they have not scheduled any neighborhood meetings or submitted anything else to us, so it's, it's difficult to say when that's going to happen, but we have had some preliminary conversations at least.
Sort of like at Woodruff Acres, that and we waited on Rucker Road out there.
What, I'm sorry?
It, it took a while to get that light out down 231 going Rucker Road and Woodruff Acres, right there, yeah.
And Davenport.
Yes, because we'll have to see, you know, construction plans, we'll have to review them, approve them, and then they get sent off to the state, and the state has to review and approve as well, because Lebanon, you know, US 231.
So in your discussions with this applicant, do you, did you get a feel for a timeframe on how fast they would move if they got the rezoning tonight before they, before you saw a site plan come before you?
They really didn't give, that I recall, any kind of a
Talking about the property just to the west?
Yeah, we're talking about the current property? We're talking about the one next door?
No, no, the current, the current property.
Okay.
The applicant.
Right, I'm not, for a minute now, they're here, they can answer that. I don't have a timeframe, you know, per se, as to what they're proposing, but I'm sure they could answer that question when they come up to speak.
Let's hear from Clyde, and we can ask him that question. Pettis, you have something?
Yes, is the cemetery on this property, or is it on the one that we approved?
Well, it's actually its own separate parcel, on, actually. Now, they will provide access off of this property to, to the cemetery, yeah, not from the Irwin property, yeah, Mike's highlighting
Part of an amenity area that somebody can park and travel and go back to it.
But it's actually a separate parcel. It's not really part of this track.
And am I looking at this right, that there is parking for, what, seven, over 700 cars on that 36 acres?
Yes, I believe you are. Total parking of 84, the two-bedroom townhomes.
And 500?
Now, they're, they are counting garage spaces and drive, drive and garage spaces as well. It's not just surface
I know, but still, but there's 700 cars in that, could possibly, I'm not saying
Correct, right. I mean, if every driveway can fit four people and you've got two more in the garage, I mean, that'd be six per unit. I think that's what they're doing now. You know, we've had that discussion before, is how many people actually park their cars in the garage. But they are making provision in the driveways for four vehicles.
First, I know the discussion we had on the one right beside it, that development beside it.
Right.
It'll be interesting on a snowy morning right out there on that highway.
Any other questions when we hear from the applicant? Clyde, is it you? If you'd come up.
Chairman Phillips, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree at Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here representing across that Walter Hill. Our client's Mr. Randy Fritsum with, with Black Diamond Construction. And also with us is Enoch Gerald, who is one of our engineers, who was a part of the traffic study, drainage study. So if you get any more specific questions related to those project pieces of the puzzle, we'd be glad to answer them. I will be brief, as brief as I can be. Let's go ahead and start the first slide. As was mentioned out here, this is at the intersection of 231 and Central Valley Road. Currently, the property is rural in nature. It's basically right across the street from the landfill and, and basically surrounded by agricultural uses right now, basically vacant land. Next. Just real briefly, through some of the images around it, the first image on the top right shows basically Central Valley Road. It does kind of peel off to the right once you get past our site. There's a church across the street, a primitive Baptist church. That's important, because there is a alcohol limitation in terms of distances for a convenience store from a church. So we wanted to make sure that our, our alcohol sales were the proper distance from a church facility. Next slide. Across the street, the top three slides are really showing the homes across from our development. They're basically larger lot homes, probably in the 70s and 80s in terms of construction, a lot of them. But it's pretty much rural character for the most part. Below that is just a view looking down Highway 231. That particular road section in front of our development is extremely wide. Don't know all the history about that, but it has a, a real large diameter, cross-section, pull-off area, what have you. And then if you look on the bottom right corner, that shows you the rural character of the site. Right now, it's been used for agricultural for multiple years, has a little bit of a drawdown to it, but basically it's open pastoral land. Next slide. Again, more of the site character and views into the site across 231, looking into the site. Next, please. As far as the overall site plan, just want to bring your attention to a few things, as was mentioned by Doug, it's a 36.5 acre site, 126 units is what we're proposing, with a density a little over three units per acre. There are going to be 16 two-bedroom homes, townhomes, and 84 three-bedroom townhomes. The minimum size on the townhomes is 1,100 square feet. There's going to be 24 or 26 single-family detached homes, and the critical point there was that the minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet. Next, please. Overall character of the homes that we're proposing, there'll be six-plex townhomes. There'll be, as mentioned, a, a combination of masonry products, primarily brick and stone and hardy board. There will also be a four-plex of clustering of townhomes as well. Hit the next one? That's the four-plex, go ahead, next one, please. And then there'll be a, a series of different types of concepts for single-family homes on the detached, and the detached product on the 7,000-square-foot lots. One of the things we work with the planning staff on, I want to thank them for, we've gone through multiple renditions on this master plan to really make sure parking was well accounted for. So as Doug mentioned, if it, there's, there's only a few two, two-bedroom units, they're on the in-units of the six-plex townhomes. They'll have a one-car garage, but still four cars in the driveway, so really five-car possibility of parking for a two-bedroom townhome. As far as the three-bedroom townhomes, two cars in the garage, four out in the driveway, so six for that. And then the single-family homes, we have two cars in the, in the garage, and then four-car parking as far as in the driveway. But we also have over 40 additional spaces for guests. And one of the renditions we worked through with the planning staff was making sure that those parking, the additional parking that was necessary to keep people from parking on the roads was well distributed throughout the development. So a lot of that parking is associated with our green spaces, a lot of it's kind of intermittent between the, between the townhomes. We wanted to make sure that it was well dispersed, so it'll be well utilized. Even our mail kiosk is in the center of the, the townhomes that are running parallel to 231. That was, again, to provide some additional parking for those townhomes that are running along that main central road. This, this slide just shows you that Mr. Fritsum has already spent some time with a residential design, resident designer to show the variety of homes. We may not be limited to these seven or eight homes that we showed in the pattern book, but we do want you to realize that this is the character of the neighborhood. We feel like it's going to be a really, has a, has a nice character, craftsman-style homes. With the townhomes and the single-family homes, they'll have some relationship to each other in terms of architecturally. And then, as was mentioned, there is a commercial corner. Mr. Fritsum has been in conversations with some folks who would like to do a convenience center on the corner. We've allocated about 1.75 acres for that application, and it have good access from Central Valley Road as well as 231, a good presentation. And the drawing that's shown, the picture that's shown, there's a concept drawing, so it'll look something in character of that, but we do, we do think it'll have some sort of a gas facility as well as convenience store associated with it. Everything in purple is basically usable open space. I'm excited about this project and the fact that I think it's going to have a very open-space type character. We try to do our best to limit the orientation of the homes looking towards the landfill, because the landfill does have kind of a strong signature as you look across the site. So really, there's only a few homes that actually back up to the landfill. The majority of the homes back up to the green space or to a green space, so we're excited about that, to create that open space kind, that kind of feel. And I think at the end of the day, it's going to have a very, kind of, still kind of a pastoral character to it, because of the septic field that'll be needed on the property. As far as the amenities are concerned, I'll just walk around them from basically left to right, counterclockwise. The mail kiosk is shown, is in the center of that townhome cluster that runs parallel to Highway 231. As was mentioned, the cemetery, that Pettis mentioned, will have a picnic area associated with that, just a green space that'll be utilized by both the detached homes and the multifamily homes, the townhomes. But that's important, because we, we wanted to make sure there was access to the cemetery, that we wouldn't close that off. So they'll be, they'll come into the neighborhood, use that parking lot, walk into the cemetery, and we wanted to make sure they had continued access. There will be a pavilion area and, and a formal green space with a pavilion playground area. And that's going to be kind of neat, because it's going to be up against the step field. And as was mentioned, the step fields have to have a perimeter fencing area, but they still visually are connected. So we feel like it's going to have a very open character, and the amenity center being right on that edge will give that a real expansive kind of feel. It'll have a, a mulch walking trail that, that basically goes from the cemetery area to the kiosk, runs along parallel to, to 231, but backs up to those townhomes, and it gives them a little bit more of a green space behind them that we thought was important. And then we have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Well, they alter in some places, but they're pretty much on both sides of the street throughout the development, and then they'll link all the green spaces together. So we feel like from a livability standpoint, we're excited that there's been a lot of connection to green space. There's also a dog park, we've seen a lot of those dog parks, but this one's centralized in the townhome area. Feel, feel like that'll be well utilized. And we're also showing that playground that's associated with the pavilion and the largest amenity area. This one, a question was about, was asked about phasing. Mr. Fritsum anticipates everything in green to be in phase one, so that will be the main connector that connects the whole development together, that Mike already mentioned, it's going to be a private road, I mean, a public road. Everything in blue would be in the phase two. That section that's furthest to the north, that upper section and that's in blue, that'll be where the private roads are. So primarily, the main road going through will be public. The road accessing the, the townhomes on the north will be private. And then as far as the signal and the commercial area, Mr. Fritsum plans on doing that early in the development process, to make sure that gets underway. So the majority of the step system has to be in place for us to move forward on the development, so that's why it's in phase one. All the single-family detached homes are in phase one, and then the townhomes will be in phase two. Next, please. As was mentioned, there's existing buffer lines, basically hedge rows, tree rows along the property lines. We like to maintain those. We'd like to enhance them where we feel like it's necessary, but we do want to create some separation with our development and, and kind of utilize some of the existing vegetation that's already there. And then there are some areas where we, we put a, a little buffer strip between the, the detached homes and the townhomes, basically right, yeah, there you go, Mike, by 8 and 24. And then we put a, a buffer strip that surrounds the commercial property to make sure it has its own kind of separate identity, it doesn't really have a negative impact on the townhomes behind it. Next, please. This exhibit basically shows the sidewalk systems in blue. It shows the, the main access road in red, I mean, in, in purple, and then the mulch path in red. So that's the overall note, road network. It is noted that the property to the west, we are anticipating that tie-in, they'll probably have to respond to us, because we're limited with our step field as far as how far over to the north we can go. And then we are in coordination with the property to the south as far as where their access point is. We know they're going to have an access point coming onto this property. The staff want to make sure that we're very clear on making sure they can circulate through us and give them a connection to the Central Valley Light. And lastly, the last slide really, just an emphasis on making sure we maintain a minimum of a 35-foot setback on the, on the houses from the property line, and then a 40-foot setback for the garages. So in every situation, we have at least 40 feet of depth on the garages, and that allows us to park four cars. Whether there's a sidewalk, if there's a sidewalk, we're 40 feet past the sidewalk. If there's a situation where there's not a sidewalk, we're 40 feet back from the road. But we wanted to make sure that there is ample parking. We know that's a primary concern, and we know it's a negative look whenever cars are parked on the streets, so we feel like we've adequately met that concern. We feel like it's a, a good project. We're excited about that location. I'm excited about Mr. Fritsum finding that location, I was telling people, drive by it every day. They've been driving by it for years, and he saw it for the first time. So it's been exciting to work with the planning staff on this process. We're, hopefully, we can move forward tonight. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer questions I can. Again, if there's any, any questions, Mr. Gerald from Huddleston Steel's here, and then Mr. Fritsum's here as well, if you have any questions for the developer.
Clyde, can you cover the roads again, if you would, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Phillips? Okay, so the road that parallels 231 and then goes up into the neighborhoods to both the west and to the south, that's public. The two appendages that are in the townhome area to the north, those are private roads.
Age-old question of parking on the streets, restrictions as it relates to the HOA language?
We don't have that in the book currently, Chairman, but we can put that in the book. That won't be an issue at all. We wanted to make sure that we had ample parking off-street, for sure, as far as the driveways, and also we're weighted towards a lot of our guest parking in that area. But we, if we need to put in the book that there's no street parking with HOA, that's something we can do.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Glad to have a, a comment, and I guess a concern about the phasing. Building the homes in the back section, first the single-family homes, and you get those people starting to move in, and then you start construction on these townhomes along the main road there. And of course, townhomes are very busy construction areas with lots of tractor-trailers and concrete pump trucks and, and whatnot. It's a very tight work environment, and a lot of vehicles in the streets, a lot of gravel, a lot of mud, a lot of people. I see a lot of friction developing with the homeowners that have moved in the single-family area already, and they've bought in, and then they feel like they're, they're living in a, in a war minefield. Do you have some sort of plan for traffic control, cleanup, trying to prevent complaints to the city and the codes department running out there every day and enforcing the, the regulations for cleanliness and that sort of thing?
Well, there's two, I think there may be two answers to the question. We don't have a current plan for the construction process as far as how that's going to work. But Mr. Fritsum may, but we also, we may be able to consider just bringing the, the phase two, that element where the townhomes are along that parallel road. Is there a chance we can bring those into phase one, Randy? Yeah, we could change the exhibit, so really that, that the, your point's well taken, that if they're traversing this site and they're having to traverse through a construction zone, that's going to be a potential conflict area. If we can synchronize the townhomes that run parallel to 231, along with the single-family detached homes, I, I think that where the private roads are, we can probably isolate that movement, maybe create another temporary access off of Central Valley, like a construction road, so they're not really coming down the main pipe. But that's a great point. And I think Mr. Fritsum will want to do that, if we just want to modify the pattern book between now and, and Board of Commissioners to change the phasing. Great observation.
Other questions for Clyde at this time?
This isn't necessarily a question, more of a, a comment. CUD provided some correspondence earlier today regarding the commercial area. As of right now, the, the water demand out in that area wouldn't be able to support hydrants as far as the commercial portion was concerned. Now, that can be addressed by either some improvements or to the system or to possibly sprinkling the building and that kind of thing. Domestic and everything is fine for the, for the residential areas, but I wanted to at least make that, point that out to everybody. But again, that's something that, when a site plan's submitted, that can be dealt with, but I wanted to make sure that that got on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Clyde.
Thank you.
Ready for our public hearing? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item number REZ21-013, Huddleston Steel Engineering Incorporated for Randy Fritsum. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mark or Doug has, Commissioner Gammon, I think it's Virgil, right? This is, has he spoke for?
I haven't had any conversations with Commissioner Gammon on this. I believe the applicants have. I know he didn't have much of any issue with the development directly to the south, the urban property. I won't speak for him, but if the applicant has any information from Commissioner Gammon they would want to share there, I guess, more than, I see Mr. Enick Gerald coming up to discuss that, but I know that he's been contacted, just not by us.
Real quick, Mr. Fritzen has met with Virgil a couple of times. He carried his pattern book to him last week, and Commissioner Gammon is good with it. Another thing I'd like to note is Black Diamond Construction will be developing lots and building all of the product for sale. I mean, they're going to build everything themselves. They're not selling lots to someone else. They're building every bit of it. Just to make sure we understand the traffic, my, I mean, the traffic study that Gillian Fishbach did, you know, today, the signal is warranted today at Central Valley and Lebanon Road. Mr. Fritzen is going to put that in. That signal and improvements, the last one I did summer to this was $750,000. I mean, he's going to pay for every bit of that. Probably Liberty Station, really, Valley's one caused that, but anyway, he's going to put that in. And then the left turn lane that Mike talked about on Central Valley, that won't be an issue to look at when we get into the site plans. We've agreed with the recommendations of the traffic study. We've agreed to do that. We just don't typically put all those traffic improvements in the pattern book, but if we need to call that out, that's not an issue to do that. But we certainly understand, I discussed that with Mike today. We're going to do that. I mean, that's not an issue. It's just more of a construction plan thing. So that's really all the comments that I would have, unless you have any questions.
We've talked about the turn lane and the signal, which is wonderful, but you also have access to 231, correct? What, how is that access going to be handled?
The traffic study says that they are doing a southbound right turn lane, decal right turn lane into the development, and there's already a three-lane section out front that can function as a northbound left turn lane into the development. So they've got that already in place. Now, it's still with the, all the improvements, that's still going to be a, if I can find It's still going to be an issue trying eastbound right turn lane, getting out. It's still a level surface F in the morning. So if I were anybody, I'm going up to the traffic signal to get out and go left out of here, to go north. But if I just come out, see this new entrance on Lebanon Pike is going to be an unsignalized. So you just take your chances, and if there's a break in traffic, you can turn north and go, turn left, go north.
Other questions?
I'm going, yes, sir, I'm going to go ahead and ask this question. The little cemetery there in the corner of both of these developments, is it full or are there potential more times for interment? And if they are, where are they going to park? If you take?
Well, yeah.
A funeral procession out there, and you're going to inter grandma at the cemetery, where are you going to park when you're doing that?
This is an older cemetery that was identified when the county did their cemetery inventory several years back. It's the Black Family Cemetery. Now, as far as are there going to be other interments in that, I'm not aware of any personally. And I don't know if anybody from our archive staff would be aware of any either. I think this has been there for quite some time. However, they are proposing to put a parking area right near the cemetery with that one common area. So if somebody wanted to come visit the graves, they'd have that ability to do so. Probably a better situation than what they currently have.
We did talk to Randy about a potential Boy Scout project to help clean it up. Yeah.
I'd like to make a suggestion that the cemetery be, make the suggestion to the developer that the cemetery be fenced and the fence locked or some sort of ways to do that because it becomes, they tend to become a playground for kids and people sometimes put their pets in there and use it for a little playground for their pets. And it's not the way we want our cemeteries treated. I think it's prudent to do that to protect the neighborhood.
And just, again, I understand what you're saying, and they might be able to make some improvements on their side, but this is technically, it is its own property. It's not part of this project. So they'd have to be careful with what they do. They don't want to be able to, you know, they want to actually block, your point's well taken, but they have to be careful not to actually get on the property because it's not part of the project.
It goes back to the early 1800s, I believe, and it's.
Do you know if there's any current Black Family, it says it's the Black Family Cemetery. Is there any current caretaker or someone to contact that or has been contacted about the cemetery?
I would.
I'm not aware of any myself.
What's the name of the cemetery?
It's called the Black Family Cemetery. At least that's what it's, that's what it's labeled here on our GIS system.
There are several of those of the Black family that lives in the Walter Hill area. I mean, we had a county commissioner, you know, Jack Black lives back over that direction. It may be some of that family or whatever, but those old cemeteries like that, I, the thing is, with that cemetery right there, I noticed in the pictures that you show of that cemetery that already have fences on it. And that makes it the property of that family and who that cemetery is. And you see that fence there? That's a relative old fence, pretty old. And whenever you start trying to move some of that or trying to touch that, you better be careful because that goes back into state ruling, that whenever you start doing it, we're dealing with one right now, that there is some arbitration on. So, but I already see some fencing there for it. So that is a fairly old cemetery that you have there, but I would say some of the family still lives in that area. This is what we're seeing in a lot of cemeteries all over this county. In fact, I have one that that's around a golf course that's similar to that. It's just hard to get to them, and I'm glad to hear that they're just even putting a parking space there where you can get to it that way. That way, I would say over time, people have had a hard time getting to this one to maintain it. That's the thing with these, it's hard to get to them to maintain them. So if there is some contact made to family members in that area, and if you, if the developers do provide a way to get to it, and if they do provide a place there where they can get to it to maintain it, that will help that cemetery.
Agreed. It appears that the cemetery has been neglected for years and years, and this development would give attention to that cemetery and improve the condition of it, I guess.
Somebody, somebody will work on and clean that up when they get, when you get houses around like that, and they will, and it's obviously has been neglected. Like you said, they're scattered all through the hills everywhere, the cemetery is like them.
I'll, I'll bring that up to the Historical Society about that cemetery because seeing one with that fence like that around it, that is a possibility of one that we may can locate some of that family and we may can get somebody interested in it. And if someone from the developers there will get in touch with me, I'll see what we can do.
Pettis.
Mr. Chair, I believe I'm ready to construct a motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve subject to staff comments. And as I read these staff comments, it says, "Staff recommends approval of the request but feels additional discussion is warranted on left turn lanes accessing the development along Central Valley Road." So we've talked about that. We've discussed that, and I think I'm okay with having that discussion delayed until a site plan comes before us. Because what I'm hoping is, we've heard that, you know, he may be spending 3/4 of a million dollars on traffic lights for that intersection. But maybe because a developer or two has already discussed those other properties that may be coming to planning in the near future, if the timing's right, maybe they can share in that cost of those lights, which will then even free up some of that $750,000 to help him work on those turning lanes that we so desire. And I understand staff's desire to get that bite at the apple, but we're not going anywhere. They're not going anywhere. We will have plenty of time to vet this out on site plan review. So I'm going to make a motion based on those staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezoning request for REZ 21-013. Huddleston Steel Engineering for Randy Fritzen. Other questions and comments? Ready to vote? Those in favor of the motion to approve this rezoning request, please say aye. Opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Staff reports, Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just one brief report, I just wanted to kind of gauge the planning commissioner's appetite, so to speak. You'll recall last year, we did not do a holiday meal due to the onset of COVID and everything that was going on with that. Didn't know if that was something that you would want to entertain for this year prior to our December the 13th meeting. You don't have to give me an answer now, but it's just something that you might want to consider, and if so, we can certainly start coordinating that. But I wanted at least get your, get some preliminary thoughts on it, see if that's something that you would want to do for this year.
Give Doug a call?
Or email, whatever.
Or email, or even text, just contact Doug if you have a feeling one way or the other on that within the next week or so, if you will. The November 22nd meeting has been canceled, of course. We usually cancel that Thanksgiving week meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, appears December 13th here at 6:00 p.m. in this courtroom. I'll also go ahead and say that this rezoning request that we just went through will be heard before the full county commission on the 16th of December.
Yeah. A couple more things I did want to bring up. Mike just reminded me of something, and I thought of something else. I wanted just to give a reminder to everybody here about the joint meeting with the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners next week. It's Wednesday in this room, starting at 5:00. There'll be some, you know, preliminary kind of meet and greet kind of things, and then we'll go into the bulk of the presentation. I think Michael Skipper expects it to be a couple hours total, so just to be aware of that. Also, that was about the deadline. Yeah. We'll be getting our, we're working on our submittal schedule for 2022 right now. We're about done with it. We did want to just kind of put this out there for everybody. This doesn't really involve you necessarily, but just so it's out there, the Platts and plan submittal for the January meeting, we're going to back that up a little bit until the day after our December meeting, which would be the 13th. Normally, the submittal deadline for Platts and plans is later in the month, but we wanted to back it up to not interfere with the holidays, give staff time to actually get comments out before the holidays start and give the engineers more time to work on their, on the comments. But I just wanted to let the alert that, I think that was what we wanted to talk about. Yeah. But just wanted to kind of make that public service announcement more than anything. So thank you.
Getting back to the comprehensive plan meeting on the 17th, it's a Wednesday evening. This is a called meeting. Your attendance is important, so put it on your calendar and do your best to get here. Once again, it's at 5:00 here in this room. It'll be a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the full county commission. Anyone have anything else? Thank you for your attendance and your time. With that, we are adjourned.